We do have two attendees, so it's six o'clock, so we can start whenever we're ready. I'm just gonna turn my camera around. It's good no one's around. I get to be on TV. And Rashonda, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. We are here for the second time regarding the FY, excuse me, the floods of 2022 for our public hearing regarding our CDBG disaster recovery. And this is our second action plan public hearing because we had two distinct changes from the original submission and public hearing that we held in June of this year. So let's jump right into this. Our agenda today, we will be going over our introduction and overview, telling you about the purpose of today's hearing. We'll talk about the disaster impacts and our risk index, the unmet needs analysis results. Again, sharing our proposed action plan activities and timeline with you specifically pointing out the edits. And then we'll have opportunities for discussion. I want to note that we are here at 1520 Market in person in our boardroom. And we are also presenting, potentially, we have a couple of members of the community online as well. Next slide. Because we've gone through the agenda time, you can just jump to additional slides. So CDA serves as the clearinghouse for federal and state funds, actually a hub of federal, state, and local funds for the city of St. Louis. We are working to implement the mayor's agenda for economic justice by funding a wide range of public and nonprofit entities to provide public services, build affordable housing, and provide neighborhood transformation activities in accordance with our citizen participation plan, all surrounding empowering, developing, and transforming the city of St. Louis. Next slide. The purpose of today's public hearing are four parts. One, ask questions about the goals of CDBG DR funding to understand the unmet needs in the community. For you to provide comments to us regarding disaster mitigation needs in your community. And then I want you to respond to the action plan draft and any mitigation and recovery activities we have presented to HUD in response to the 2022 historic flash flooding. As you see, the Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated $25,834,000 in community development block grant disaster recovery funds to the city of St. Louis. And we have six years to complete these activities funded through this grant beginning September 2024, but more importantly, after the acceptance of our action plan by HUD. Next slide, please. Oh, before that, we said it again at the beginning, but please note this is the second public comment period for the city's initial CDBG action plan. The city added a study to assess the needs to re- to rental households. And these changes will be described in greater detail during this presentation. This was all based on comments from the public and from HUD that the city decided to eliminate two public service activities and ship those funds to the proposed home repair program. Next slide. I would be remiss if I did not mention our team members and partners that are joining today. We have Lisa Jones, who's been leading the work with the Community Development Administration regarding our CDBG DR program and our consultants from ICA, Christopher Nobucci and Jim Konder are also here, serving as subject matter experts and will be more engaged throughout the presentation at the end for any Q and A as needed. So what are disaster recovery funds and how can they be used? So in response to extreme impacts for disasters, Congress appropriates funding. And that is what the disaster recovery funds are. They're used and provided for the most impacted and distressed areas in household relief, housing, economic revitalization, infrastructure planning, and mitigation. There are also areas and unmet needs that are tied to the disaster that other federal programs like FEMA and insurance were not able to address. Who's eligible to receive these funds? Well, funds are awarded to state and local government, hence the city of St. Louis receiving the funds. And then each of the programs that we present, and if they are approved by HUD, then we allocate those funds to city agencies and nonprofit organizations, also economic development agencies and businesses to disperse to citizens throughout the city of St. Louis that were affected by the disaster. Next slide. All CDBG DR activities must clearly address an impact of disaster or reduce future risk. And this means that a CDBG eligible activity must first meet a national objective, which listed here are responding to urgent needs, the prevention of storm and flood, and then activities benefiting low, moderate income persons. The activities must also address the direct or indirect impact from the disaster in the city or county covered by the presidential disaster declaration or mitigate risk and even the future disasters. So mitigate risk of future disasters is also an eligible activity. And then they must be located in an impacted and distressed city or county, such as the city of St. Louis. Note that HUD requires that all grantees allocate 15% of grants for disaster mitigation. And those are activities that increase resilience to disasters or reduce, possibly even eliminate, the long-term risk to people and communities by lessening the impact of future disasters. Next slide, we're gonna jump into our disaster impacts and then our unmet need. Excuse me, and our proposed activities. We propose home repair, home buyout, green infrastructure program, and wood recovery and mitigation planning. These are the two eliminated activities based on comments from citizens and HUD, which shifted over $1.9 million from public services to home repair. Initially in June, all seven of these categories were presented, but based on your comments, the flood reserve response program and the household relief assistance program were removed from proposed eligible activities. Next slide. HUD requires that funds be used for costs related to unmet needs in the most impacted and distressed areas, which are called mid areas. The city is required to spend at least 80% of all CDBG DR funds in HUD identified mid areas. It's important to highlight here that the entire city of St. Louis has been designated by HUD as a mid area. So therefore, the city will spend 100% of CDBG DR funds within the city. Next slide. If you see, this map clearly indicates all distress calls from the United Way 201 system that were received between July 27 of 2022 and August 4 of 2022. This shows households requesting services during that time with a high concentration in North St. Louis communities. Next slide. Based on our unmet needs analysis, the information collected was conducted by us here at CDA. And it served as a foundation for our CDBG program refunding and also what we were going to prioritize. Next slide. It was found that a total of 3,797 owner occupied homes were affected and a total of 2,991 renter occupied homes were affected. Specifically outlined in the chart, you will see the damage categories with most in home owner occupied and renter occupied homes having minor damage costing between $1 and $5,000. Next slide. As one of HUD's primary areas of recovery concerns, significant focus was placed on the assessment and recovery of affordable housing. And so the city performed a comparative analysis of the homeowner applications received by FEMA for individual assistance. And we looked at SBA received data regarding the disaster. Those details are shown in the chart. To the right here. You're seeing a total of over $21 billion in unmet need population. Next slide, please. The city also suffered during the FY '22 floods, particularly the street department located in 1900 Hampton at the intersection of 44. Had over $5 million in damage. And other buildings are reflected in the table below. Next slide. Our small businesses were affected. A total around $3.3 million in small business assistance was blown, but there was still a gap. And we're showing the total verified loss of over $19 million. And still a gap, there remains a $15.8 million of unmet needs for our small business population. Next slide. We did a lot of resident surveys. And as part of our surveys, we collected 124 responses from residents. And you will see in the unmet needs survey that 40% of people wanted a new neighborhood infrastructure to prevent future damage. And that's speaking to that mitigation of allocation of over 15%. Another 36% wanted repairs to their home. And all the way down to support for livings that expensive, including rent and housing payments at 6%. Next slide, please. In our mitigation only activities, the St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies some hazards that pose great risk to the city and is assessed based on the frequency and severity of the hazard. And the highest probability and impact of natural hazard were part of this here as flood, extreme heat, severe thunderstorm and wind tornado, and severe winter weather. Next slide. Our high hazard floodplain areas are located throughout the city. And then they run through some of the most densely populated and vulnerable communities in the city. Shown here in this map. Next slide, please. The social vulnerability index also highlights in the northern portion of the city, high social vulnerabilities and extreme shock and stressors such as flood hazards still exist throughout the city. Next slide. With all this data and information collected and in response, we have new proposed action plan activities. Next slide. You will see the two eliminated activities from the previously posted action plan, flood response reserve and household assistance relief have been eliminated and replaced, not necessarily replaced, but actually reallocated to the home repair program. So the home repair program now has $7,833,902 allocated to it. The housing home buyout program, which is absolutely voluntary, has a budget allocation of $5,418,940. A green infrastructure program at $9,816,920. Flood recovery mitigation planning program at $1,472,538. And admin funds at $1,291,700 for the entire budget of $25,834. Drilling down into each program, you'll see on the next slide, we'll start with the home repair program. We talked about the budget, but in general, the home repair program on the next slide, please. The home repair program, it aims to assist homeowners in repairing their homes and supporting the behalf of older and existing housing stock. The beneficiaries of the program will be low, moderate individuals that are socially vulnerable. And we want you to note that the city is proposing the use of CDBG DR funds to further assess the need for problematic funds for tenant occupied housing recovery. If the study indicates there is a repair and rehabilitation need among winter households, the home repair program will be expanded to accommodate tenant occupied housing repair needs as well as the owner occupied housing needs. Next slide. Our second program is the voluntary home buyout program. And this program will allow for the acquisition of properties that are located in a floodway, a floodplain, or in other defined disaster risk reduction areas. This is to reduce the risk of life or property from future flooding. The beneficiaries are the same population of low to moderate income individuals, unsocially vulnerable homeowners in the city of St. Louis. The service area will be identified as the mid county, but of course, we spoke about the entire city of St. Louis is considered a HUD identified mid area. Next slide. The green infrastructure program is to address unmet recovery and resilience needs in our public infrastructure and in our critical facilities. In part with a regional flood mitigation and green infrastructure plan, but also in the restoration of the river DePere through a feasibility and design study. The city will design and construct floodwater control measures to mitigate against flood hazard risks in areas impacted by the disaster, but not limited to rain gardens and catchment basins and other daylighting drainage ways and river restoration. Next slide. Our mitigation and flood recovery program is the last program we are presenting for this action plan. And that is funds for planning activities to assess the disaster recovery needs and prevent slash mitigate flood hazards that potentially happen in the future. Next slide. Our action plan timeline, as we discussed, we originally had our first public hearing in June of this year. Next slide, please. We did community outreach starting as early as February, all throughout May. We had the first public comment period that started in June and the public hearing. We are now in another public comment period because we updated the action plan, which is online for you to look at. If needed, we plan to submit this updated action plan to HUD next month in December. We plan for it to be accepted and approved and hope to receive a grant agreement in March of 2025 so that we can start launching programs by the middle of next year, 2025. At this time, we ask for any comments or questions that you have. Next slide, please. Next slide. And for our citizen engagement, our public comment periods will, well, we're in public comment period. So you have from now, right now, in this moment, if you want to come off and ask any questions through November 25 to give us more feedback about what we're presenting to HUD. The city is also maintaining a public website that permits individuals and entities seeking assistance to see how the grant funds will be used. Copies of all relevant procurement documents and administrative contracts and details will be forthcoming. Tom just dropped into the chat the link to the website. And on the next slide, I want you to see how to provide your comments. They are by email, cdvg@stlouis-mo.gov. You can mail it to us here at 1520 Market Street in Suite 2000, St. Louis, Missouri 63103. And then you can tell us right now how we can further meet your need. And on our last slide, it's just reiterating that we're accepting your public comment through November 25. A recording of this virtual public hearing will remain on CDA's website specific to this disaster recovery. For anyone who was not able to attend, feel free to share it with the community. So we're gonna open up for any questions. And thank you for your time today.
Great. And as I've mentioned in the chat, you can raise your hand and we'll bring you on like a radio show and you can just answer live. Or feel free to use the Q and A feature in Zoom. Or just drop your questions in the chat and we'll just go through them as received. Rashonda, Lisa, are you able to see the Q and As in the chat? And I will read them off anyway.
So when we speak with HUD, are you referring to employees? Are community members living in HUD establishments? I don't recall residents having input regarding these matters. Even though there are public hearings, not everyone has access to digital information or technology. I don't quite understand the question, but I'm going to do my best to kind of address it. So when a city receives funds from the federal government for disaster recovery, it comes from HUD. And so the city has to put together a plan and proposed activities that HUD has to approve. So when we are speaking about HUD, we're referring to the federal government, housing and urban development, that gives funds to entitlement programs like cities throughout St. Louis so that we can distribute those to nonprofit entities and then they give it to the community members. I hope that helps address your question. As far as outreach, we had some open houses at Role. We had another at City 12th and Park Rec Center and at Kamala Dela. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. The other is would a landlord who rents a single family home to a tenant be eligible for the buyout program?
Rashonda, real quick, I just wanna add. And in addition to those open houses, we've had, we had the online survey all through spring. And then we've had, this is now, I think, our third virtual or with a virtual option, open house. So where we've been, it's been really great getting out and collecting input. And we've also met with stakeholders who are interested in stormwater, folks like MSD who have been a part of this plan. And if this is your first meeting, well, we're just glad you're here. And this is your big opportunity to let us know what you think of the plan and what we can improve. So we're glad that you're here. If you have missed those other opportunities, so I just want to share those things, because those were great events. Thank you.
And that is very true. Now, about the landlord who rents a single family home to a tenant, be eligible for the buyout program? If it is in an eligible area and and meets the program requirements, absolutely. Let's see, would someone who lives in one unit but rents out one or more units in the same building be eligible for the buyout? So the buyout program, one, they're voluntary, we know that, but it's for the owners of the building. I hope that helps you anonymous activity. Lisa, did you have any additional insight? Chris, Jim, did you have any additional feedback for this question?
Regarding the buyout?
Yes.
Yeah, you're correct. As described in the action plan, it's contemplated for owner occupied homes. It's a voluntary program. So that's, that's how it's currently described. It wouldn't be eligible for multifamily units, because that would require all sorts of additional compliance and, you know, dealing with tenants. And I think the city is focused on homeowners, owner occupied homes at this point.
Question is, has the home repair program been extended to, I'm sure this is supposed to say vacant buildings? And what I can share is the action plan is specific to renter occupied and owner occupied. So because a vacant building doesn't have occupants, I think that this would not be eligible at this time because it will not have an occupant considering it's vacant. Has any information about the solar program been posted? So we don't have information about a solar program yet, but I love clean energy. And there may be some other options throughout the city about a solar program. This is actually in response to the floods of 2022 and disaster recovery. But we'll, you know.
Yeah, I believe they're referring to, because when we're, when we hold these public hearings, there's a lot of interest. And an announcement made a couple of months ago that St. Louis was a part of a cohort of municipalities that won a big solar grant. It's a, it's a big federal grant for towns in Missouri. But we do not yet know the city's allocation of that grant. And so the program hasn't been set up yet, but we look forward to that happening. So I know there's a lot of interest. And the idea is helping to subsidize the installation of solar panels in city homes. And we're just, we just don't have the information yet. We know we've received or that we've been awarded funds, but we have not received those funds yet. And we don't know how much and we don't know what that program will look like yet. and we don't know how much, and we don't know what that program will look like yet, but but you'll know, you'll see it in the news and in CDA's email newsletter as soon as we get more information. And the way to subscribe to that newsletter is you go to the city's website, stlouis-mo.gov, and you just type slash and then CDA, and scroll down, you'll see the little form to sign up. And that'll be the best place to find out exactly when new things are happening with the solar program.
That is correct. The city was one of the participants, the recipients in the coalition for the solar program. It's just not the city of St. Louis as Tom pointed out. Let's see. How does this plan support residents who are in low-income housing? So if the if the, I can tell you they are eligible population according to the action plan are low to moderate income individuals. So if the resident is one impacted by the disaster, you will be eligible. With low-income housing, I'm thinking that this is will be a multi-family building, which was what Chris kind of spoke to earlier. So I don't know if I'm able to answer this very clearly for you, not knowing exactly the particular situation, but I would just refer to the action plan again, and then as we roll out program next year, you can follow up with CDA about your particular.
Yeah, I think I would maybe add to that, that as we're preparing this action plan, and correct me if I'm being too vague, you know, we're still designing programs. So for example, with green infrastructure and flood recovery and planning, even if you don't own your home, through some of these broader programs, if you live in, for example, an apartment complex that might experience flooding, we want to know where that is as we start designing in the future and working with our partners, some of those other flood mitigation programs. So if you're in an area that's getting flooded, we know there's streets, there's intersections, there's parks and neighborhoods. We want to know where you are and where there's issues with water. Does that sound correct, Rashonda?
Absolutely.
I would also mention that the funding, HUD requires the funding to benefit, seventy percent of the funding to benefit low-income, moderate-income households, and that's either through housing or investments in communities that are majority lower moderate income. So that's where, you know, Tom's mentioning the green infrastructure, those those investments, most of those investments will go towards neighborhoods where, you know, there's a lot of lower moderate income folks. As far as the housing, the housing repair program is focused on owner-occupied homes. Again, it's, we're planning for it to benefit seventy percent low moderate income households. For renters, we discovered that there was not a lot of data suggesting a need among renter populations. Because of that, one of the things that we're putting, the city is putting funding towards is a study on the needs of renter populations. So the outcome of that study that will be funded through this grant will determine whether or not they reallocate some of the home repair funds to tenant-occupied housing. So basically, there's just not enough information to allocate the funds, so the city wants to collect more information and do a better job planning out how that program will work and who it will target. So that's something to stay tuned on.
Brave one, Chris. Did anyone else have questions? Because we have answered all the ones in the chat.
Yeah, and again, you can go ahead and just scan the chat or the Q and A function here on Zoom, or I do see we have some attendees. You can just raise your hand and we'll bring you on, and you can ask your question live. And if you prefer to get more in-depth, or if it's just your preferred mode, You can see that in the chat and on the CDBGDR website. That's Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I know we have a lot of acronyms here, so you can send us an email, a letter, or while we're here this evening, go ahead and raise your hand or just put your question in the chat or followed with an email if we just really want to hear from you as we plan our next steps and make sure that this is complete as we submit it to HUD for approval that will allow us to receive this award and set up programs. CDA staff, is there anything that we missed in this presentation or our partners at Lisk, anything you'd like to share?
I think this public comment period is still open, so if you were going to share this with any members of the community, you have it until November twenty-fifth.
And I just said Lisk, which is our consultant for our other plans. Our friends at ICF, do you have any, anything to share that we might have missed or the public might be interested in based on the comments or questions?
I don't have anything to add. Thanks.
Great, well, let's count to five, and then we will go ahead and thank everyone from the public for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Joe at STL TV, thank you so much for facilitating all of this. We couldn't do it without STL TV.
No problem.
You say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.